Welcome to the June 8, 2023, special meeting of the Board of the San Francisco Guido Creek Board of Directors, called to order at 3:36. My name is Drew Combs, Chair of the Board, and I will now conduct roll call. Director Pine?
President.
Director Stone here. And let the record note for the moment, Director Eisenberg and Director Abrica are not present. With that, we'll go on to approval of the agenda, which is item number two. So I'll first call for a public comment on approval of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on agenda? Item two, approval of the agenda. Right? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais to see if there is any questions or discussion on approval of the agenda or a motion.
On the approval of the agenda?
All right. Let indicate that Director Stone moved and Director Pine seconded it, and so we'll go to a vote. Director Combs, yes. Director Stone?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Right? Let indicate that the vote was of the three directors present all voted unanimously to approve the agenda. With that, we'll go on to agenda item three, public comments. Under public comments, individual may speak on a non-agendized topic for up to three minutes. And so with that, I will call for general public comment. Anyone willing or wanting to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none and none, okay. Then I'll, I'll close a public comment and then we can move on to action items. Action item four A, designate agencies representative to vote for ACWA's next president and vice president. Is there any staff presentation or statements or is it all just what's in the agenda?
Director Combs, I don't remember it in the agenda, I mean, in the presentation, but you know, the Association of California Water Agencies, it was discussed in the package and there's a timeline of June 16th to designate a representative for voting purposes.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will call for public comment on this item. For a designated agency representative to vote for ACWA's next president and vice president. Seeing no one wanting to make public comment, I'll bring it back to the dais for any questions or nomination nominee.
Director Combs, I'm happy to be this representative as needed. I'm the alternate. If it doesn't go to me, then it would go to you or Margaret.
Okay. Who's, you said you're currently the alternate and so do we currently have a primary? Is that?
It's you.
Okay, that's what I thought. I did think that, just to be clear. I am, I'm, and so, but however it goes, the person has to be re-nominated or has to be nominated at this instance, sorry, we need. I'm okay with doing, and can you be the primary? Is it, is that possible for Tess to be the, Ms. Byler to be the primary?
Okay, so right now, we're just choosing someone to do the voting. If you want to, if you're asking about Tess now being the primary person for that role, we actually have to have a member of the board and then staff can be the alternate.
Oh, okay, so this is just about?
This is just a vote for president and vice president.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, which can be staff or a member of the board?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you, if we fail to make a decision, then it defaults to Margaret Bruce.
Okay. Okay, so later. Director Stone and Director Pine, do you, I would just sort of defer to nominating Ms. Byler to vote, but if you guys think otherwise, obviously, if there is some member of the board who would desire to serve in this, this function, we will default to. Okay, so then, then I would make the motion that we designate Ms. Byler as the agency's representative to vote for the ACWA's next president and vice president. Is there a second? All right, so you have a first from me and a Director Combs and a second from Director Pine. So then we'll do a roll call vote. Director Combs, yes. Director Stone?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Okay. Let indicate that all three directors present voted in favor of designating Ms., designated Tess Byler on the JPA staff as a representative to vote for ACWA's next president and vice president. And, okay. With that, we'll go on to informational items. Five A, Valley Water Staff Presentation and Discussion of Existing Conditions, Hydraulic Model Update Post 2022, New Year's Eve Flood, June 5, 2023. So we have a presentation, but before the presentation are, yeah, so we'll go with a presentation and then after the presentation, we'll, we'll open it up for, for public comment and then we'll bring it to the dais for any, any questions or discussion.
Excuse us for that feedback.
No worries.
So, good afternoon. My name is Jack Shu. I'm with the hydrology, hydraulics and geomorphology team at Valley Water. Just, I was asked here to give an update to JP Board. My presentation will be slightly informal. Feel free to interrupt me with questions. I'll try to be candid with everything. Yeah, so that being said, the motivation for the update to the, the hydraulics, basically stemmed from the nearest flooding that did not match what our existing model and available Thank you. Existing analysis showed, so the observed high watermarks that we took during the flooding event did not match what was analyzed previously and new, I put in quotes here, because obviously it's not new flooding areas, but new to us in terms of anticipated flooding locations were observed, specifically areas downstream of Pope Chaucer around University Avenue, Crescent, Woodland and Euclid. So the, the real question then is why? Why was there such a difference between what was observed on, on New Year's Eve with what was expected, given all the analysis that's been done since? So I tried to put together a table of uncertainties, main uncertainties that we kind of walked through. The first, the first row, the question we wanted to ask is, you know, did vegetation change over time? Since this model was developed, has, you know, new trees grown? Has there been a change that reduces creek capacity? And the way we analyze this, we look at historical photos, we checked OM logs, interviewed staff, and just looked at the general creek type to see if vegetation would establish and grow in kind of these situations. The conclusion is unlikely and there's little, no impact, meaning that vegetation seems to have remained relatively similar for the last couple decades. The other source we looked at was if there was an extraordinary amount of debris or trash on New Year's Eve event that caused significant blockages, reducing the capacity. So the observation showed that this event was what we call a first flush event in, in the industry. Basically, it's dry for the whole summer, trash accumulates in the waterways, and the first time it rains, all of it comes down. So the New Year's event had a considerable debris evidenced by photos compared with 2012 event, which was the second or third flush. I'll have a picture later on that shows kind of the contrast. The conclusion was there's likely a small to medium impact, but nothing substantial enough to cause the level of difference that we saw. Another uncertainty source is the actual flow in the creek amount of water. So this, our biggest index point for that is the U.S. Geological Survey Stream Gauge by Stanford. And there's always small calibration errors with instruments, especially in, out in the open, in nature. And there's also an additional local inflow that is to be made up between the Stanford gauge, which is about four miles upstream of the first breakout locations. So the four extra miles of creek additional, additional runoff gets accumulated through storm drains, through just natural runoff. So that, that also lends to some aspect of uncertainty. So I want to make sure, hey, was there a huge error in the, in the stream gauge? Maybe it was just measured wrong, right? Maybe it was a lot higher than it was. Conclusion is there's, there's likely some impact, but it's small to medium. It's not big enough to cause such a big difference. And lastly, we looked at sediment deposition or bank erosion. Basically, the past couple of decades, has things happened in the creek? We looked at vegetation previously, now we're going to look at, you know, have we accumulated a ton of sediment under a bridge perhaps? Perhaps we had a bank failure that, that dumped a big pile of dirt, changing the channel shape, causing a constriction and causing issues that wasn't similar to maybe 10, 20 years ago. We did preliminary reconnaissance, didn't show too much change. The comparison was from a 2020 lighter flight compared to surveys that were done around 2009. One caveat is lighter surveys only accurate if there are no vegetation present, so we could not compare, obviously, a lot of the creek due to the heavy vegetation, vegetation cover. But from what we did see, it didn't seem like there's a lot of difference. So the conclusion is there's, there's little, no impact. So going through all these kind of possibilities cumulatively, even if we went really extreme, there had to be another source. So this is kind of just a photo comparing a 2012 fixture to 2022, the same bend in the creek near Euclid Avenue, so this was a breakout location. And you can tell in both cases, you have, you know, vegetation in channel and things get, get caught on it, but we're checking, it's kind of an A B test. It, it looks relatively the same from, you know, 10 years ago. Here is a picture showing the debris difference between 2012 and 2022. The, the bottom picture is before Polton Crews dug all that stuff out of the creek. And then 2012, you can tell, you know, you don't have the same, same amount of debris. So this is where we think there's a small impact due to all this, all this debris that would get caught on trees as it, as it moves through the channel. So after, after those items could be kind of ruled out, that there isn't significant difference, nothing made New Year's Eve extraordinary, basically, that, you know, we had to kind of back up and look at, okay, what were, was our original assumptions? So we went back to the original model development that was originally made in 2009 by consulting firm Noble Consultants, and it was done for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And this was done when they initially began scoping and planning for this, the San Francisco project. It was subsequently upgraded, updated by us in 2016 to add two dimensional modeling, basically to get a floodplain analysis done as well. And we looked through it and, and the conclusion that we came to, that was basically the original characterization of the vegetation and the debris and all that is, is basically lumped into an unknown coefficient, if you will, a factor into the model. And it is difficult to estimate when the creek is dry and when you can walk it, things can change substantially and water is actually rushing through it. So this, this, this has to have an initial kind of point to go off of. So they, they came up with an initial estimate for this value and they validated it at the time, what they thought was, was, with the best available data. They had four high watermarks, and what I mean is four points. So they went out to look, one point here, one point there, so just four points all the way from Stanford all the way to US 101. So a really large distance, only four discrete points. And they used three storms that were available, 2000, 2005, 2006. None of those were high enough, you know, to the level that we saw on New Year's Eve, so there's a difference there. Another, another point of error was that the floodplain mapping that we had on hand to compare to for 1998, the storm of record, basically was not the same as what we thought. And that underestimate, underestimation basically propagated through the iterations in the model. We were unable to flag it or catch it because the, the data was scarce, it just wasn't there. You don't get a lot of flood events and we do the, and we, the data that we did have kind of mismatched and didn't have, wasn't a lot of certainty in it. So here's a map, I kind of illustrating what I mean. So the, they mentioned the middle is what we had. This is the, this Water District Flood Report from 1998. At the time, whoever put together the map, for whatever reason, didn't draw in Menlo Park and East Polton. Can't tell you why. So we didn't have that information. And then we recently dug up a 1998 report done by a Stanford graduate student, who is now a professor at San Jose State, that shows, okay, there actually was flooding on the other side of the creek, obviously. But in hindsight, we had, we didn't have this information. And the find that it did incur in 2012, we attributed, people attributed it to a fallen tree. So they said, oh, a tree fell near University, it backed up water, so it, so it flooded. So like, okay, that, that's a extraordinary situation, right? It's not a, it's not a situation that would occur all the time. And then I have this picture on the right. Thank you, Mr. Jim Wiley, who is in the audience today. Basically showing that the flooding areas are relatively similar, giving us another data point between the 2012 and 2022 events that not much change has occurred, further pointing to evidence that the original estimate was probably too low. So what this is mean is now for the Reach 2 project, we had initial assumptions and these assumptions need to be updated. So we call this a baseline model and we revise this based on our observations that listed up previously. One thing we still have yet to do is to do in-depth channel surveys. Right now, there's still water in the creek, so we cannot accurately pick up the ground underneath the, the whatever is still in the water. So we're hoping to do that next couple of months when the creek dries out or becomes low enough where we can get people in the creek. So once that's done, we will add a small update probably to this report if, if needed. And now we reassess the Reach 2 project using this new baseline. And in spoiler alert, the level production is, is far lower than we previously thought. So one big item that came out of this analysis is that there's a transfer of flood risk if the Pope Chaucer Bridge is replaced. So the bridge cannot be replaced without a significant increase to the Reach 2 project footprint. So for, just kind of as a back of the envelope, we're talking flood walls three, four feet high for about two miles on each side that would go stem from Yule Road all the way upstream to almost Pope Chaucer. The diagram below kind of shows the, the flow distribution. So 75, in, in a 100-year storm event, for example, let's say 7,500 CFS ends up passing under Middlefield Road. Some water leaves, but most of it stays in the creek. In this scenario, when Pope Chaucer is replaced, all that flow, 7,500 CFS continues passing through without flooding the areas upstream. So those neighborhoods would be protected. However, that 7,500 CFS then moves downstream to the University Avenue and further downstream locations. Now, if we, the Pope Chaucer Bridge is left in place in existing conditions, you get the 100-year flow, you get 7,500 CFS passing through Middlefield, the bridge backs up the water, the water breaks out upstream of Pope Chaucer as it, it does. And, and it starts flooding around 5,500 CFS, but at the end, about 6,400 will pass through the bridge with a lot of it leaving upstream. And then that 6,400 CFS is what's left in the creek flooding the University Avenue's surrounding locations. So basically, there's, if a 100-year storm event comes along, there's an extra thousand CFS, give or take, that you're going to transfer down to the downstream communities. And this would not be only before the 100-year storm, it would be for any storm where Pope Chaucer does not relieve pressure into the system. Whatever water used to leave Pope Chaucer and Pope Chaucer and still stays in the creek needs to be mitigated for as it moves downstream. So that would, that's how the Reach 2 project has to change slightly to look at this additional We scoped out some new alternatives to the Reach 2 project. None of this is saying we should go with this or that, it's just kind of for informational purposes, to give an idea of what we could achieve with what was currently planned and maybe some slight tweaks. The, the first alternative is basically the project as is, the Reach 2 with the widening locations everyone is familiar with, with, except Pope Chaucer Bridge will remain in place. The level of service estimated, we will get, you know, 5,500 CFS with a foot of freeboard or we can get 6,000 CFS with no freeboard. 5,500 CFS is approximately the 2012 event, 6,000 would be approximately the 2022 event on New Year's Eve. And this is all with Pope Chaucer still experiencing the flooding in that area. A second alternative, which I call alternative one, which in hindsight is a poor naming choice, but that, that, the alternative number two, I assume, you know, let, let's say we wanted a foot of freeboard, you know, to make sure we're not playing right to the edge here. We require a flood wall about a foot high in addition to the Reach 2 project that's currently being proposed. And it's about 1,000 feet of flood wall upstream and downstream of University Avenue. And that's the 2022 New Year's Eve event, but with a little bit more breathing room. And then the third and the last alternative we kind of looked at was, what if we were able to contain the 100-year flow downstream of Pope Chaucer? Basically, if we build this project, everything downstream of Pope Chaucer would be safe, but upstream, the flooding will remain the same. And that will basically be the number two project, but with additional flood walls and some possible private pedestrian bridges being replaced in people's private properties. There is a high level of risk and uncertainty, especially on this creek. I, I wanted to highlight this just for everyone's knowledge. This, this creek is pretty unique in our, in our area that it's, it's a very confined natural channel and it's close to the top of bank and it has very, very little room for error. Typically, when you see us build flood control projects, they're wide with large levees, we have maintenance roads, we have a lot of right-of-way and easement to do maintenance and the creek doesn't go in 90-degree bends, you know, every 100 feet. The bends in the channel make it extremely difficult to predict what would happen because of the, the bank erosions and, and things getting clogged. And you can imagine the amount of problems, you know, water hitting a 90-degree bend causes versus going down a straight channel. Debris jams, there's, there's plenty of debris and the 90-degree bends don't make it any better and the, the vegetation just being in such a confined area with people's homes, you know, with, basically behind old flood walls and with the added, added problem of climate change. So there's a lot of risk because people live right up to the bank and the banks are fairly unstable, relatively speaking, with, and with all the bends and the uncertainty with the climate change and, and, you know, you never know what, what could happen in the creek, right? It, it could, trees could fall, you know, things could happen. So having that freeboard, having a little extra breathing room, which is typical when we design projects, should be factored in when we make the decision. So under, I hope this was informative, I'll take questions at this point.
Cool. Thank you for the presentation. I'll turn it to the dais initially to see if there are any initial questions before public comment or if you guys want to wait or hold your questions after public comment. You, you hold your, hold, all right, let's, um, let's call for public comment. So I don't have any, any public comment card, so I will defer to Ms. Harris to, to conduct public comment.
We have a few requests to speak for online. Zena Hamer, you may begin speaking.
Hey, hi. Thank you so much for this presentation. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Um, okay, so, um, one point of clarification and one question. The distance between Pope Chaucer and Newell Road Bridge is 1.2 miles. So it's, you know, it's about a mile. So when you're talking about the length that has to be protected, it's about one mile going in one direction. So the two miles includes both directions. Is that what you were suggesting in your presentation in terms of the length and distance between the bridges?
Hey, Zena. So, no, it's linear feet. So because the creek, I don't know if one mile is as the crow flies or with all the twists and turns that the creek does make.
Okay, so the distance on Woodland Avenue is 1.2 miles. So just, I just did it, I just checked it on Google Maps, just for the record.
Okay, we're, we're, let's, let's not go back and public comment is for providing a public comment. If you have a question, you, you can ask it.
I do have a question. So.
So ask your question and it will be held and then when we get through public comment.
Okay, great. So, okay, so my question is, um, this analysis was done for the current situation. But this project is not going to be done until Newell Road Bridge is completed and the upstream channel widening is completed. And completing those steps will actually change the hydrology of the creek. And my question is, how did you take that into account? Because if you replace Newell Road Bridge, you will remove an obstruction. If you do the channel widening downstream of Newell, it will make it easier for the water to flow and potentially lower the water levels in that Reach 2 part that you were studying between Newell and Pope Chaucer. So my question is, how you took into account in your recommendations, the fact that Newell Road Bridge will be replaced and a channel will be widened before this project that you analyzed?
So yeah, Zena, the, the Newell Road Bridge does not cause hydrologically as big of a constriction. So replacing it is good for the bridge because it, it provides more freeboard, but in terms of the upstream flooding locations, it, it does not make much of a difference. Hydrologically speaking, Pope Chaucer is the, the main, the largest hydrologic constriction. So the, the, the channel widening, the analysis, the proposals we put forth, assume that that's in place and then what is left will be safely conveyed through the new, new section, regardless of hydrologically speaking, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Let's, is there another public comment?
Yes, we have a few more. Tom Reinfleisch?
Yes, Jack, thank you very much for the presentation and this analysis. I have been working on the creek with Steve, Stephen Monas Smith for, you know, since the first flow in 1998. And you're absolutely accurate in describing the various uncertainties that came along in terms of estimating, calibrating and estimating various effects on the creek. And in particular, there are a number of events that were not, I don't think in your analysis taken into account for the 1998 floods. For example, there apparently was a large oak tree at Oak Court on the Menlo Park side that fell into the creek and largely obstructed the area above University Avenue Bridge. I don't know if you were able to take that into account in your analysis or if that has, has gone by the boards.
Thanks for that information, Tom. So for 1998, we don't have a lot of quantitative data. So the high watermarks, the, the kind of survey points, what we do have is kind of a rough floodplain map that you saw earlier. That being said, so we, we know basically the flood of record creates some sort of large floodplain that we saw and we know those flooding locations are, if the same or worse than what we saw on New Year's Eve. So that, that's kind of what we can use moving forward. In terms of the falling trees, this is, this needs to be baked into the design because originally typically when we, when we design creek channels, we don't assume that trees fall left and right and clog the channel constantly. It's not, it's not typically part of the, the, you know, design process. But seeing, because the creek is so fast, the velocities are very high. Um, and and there's so much debris and so much vegetation that falls into the creek and gets stuck. Um, essentially, like, now with with that ninety eight observation, Tom, um. Basically, every time there's a large flow, we get down trees. That is almost a given at this point, which. You know, and and which is part of the fact that maybe the model underestimated previously because we didn't assume that there's just always down trees. Um, and in addition, which is why I recommended we have extra freeboard because we just don't know um, where the tree will fall. I can't infinitely model, you know, a tree here and there and decide, you know, how we're going to mitigate it. It it needs to be kind of done on a on a broad scale because we just don't know what's gonna happen. So you bring up a good point, Tom, and thank you.
Uh, I had one other uh, question or two. Uh, you mentioned as you went along that seventy five hundred cubic feet per second was a hundred year flow. Is that uh, simply because what's going to get through Middlefield Bridge is on the order of seventy five hundred cubic feet per second? Or is that a changed view of what a hundred year flood uh, uh, flow is going to be?
So to answer your question, Tom, I I think you would want to appreciate more technical uh, answer. Um, the the hundred flow, we base that off um, stream gauge statistics um, at the Stanford, the USGS gauge. So that has a long period of record. We're pretty confident that, um, so the the state of practice is you use uh, statistics to calculate the hundred peak flow. So we have a number there at the USGS stream gauge. Um, we take that and we estimate how much is going to leave at Middlefield from that amount, so some water leaves, and seventy five hundred CFS is is what's left as a passenger.
And um, one other uh, question, whether you took into account. What the ultimate goal of the reach to fix is? Um, uh, there was a decision by the Water District Board. Uh, I don't have the exact date. I think it was about five years ago, that we were not able to reach a hundred year uh, protection. Uh, by simply changing the capacity of the creek from uh, basically Pope Chaucer or Middlefield down to uh, one oh one and then to the bay. That uh, what we wanted to do was to provide a level of protection that would protect against flows that. Uh, for example, occurred in nineteen ninety eight, or the more recent one that caused significant damage and do the best we can. And that that gets coupled with an upstream uh, uh, study for detention. And I think the best candidate right now is the work that the uh, Stanford University is doing with the Searsville Dam. Uh, as a potential way of gating uh, water flow through that dam. Uh, that would get down to uh, the uh, Pope Chaucer and the lower reach of the creek. So what is, are you taking into uh, your consideration of what is the goal of the reach to fix? Are you trying to achieve the one hundred year flood protection? Or are you trying to achieve some uh, uh, great improvement over what the current exposure is to flooding? Uh, and to do as best we can?
Sure, Tom, yeah. Um, so what I presented is is are some options. I think ultimate decision lies with um, the JPA and the powers that be. Um, obviously, with enough money, enough willpower, we can design any level of flood protection. Um, but I mean, it all comes down to, you know, cost and and what what we're willing to um, sacrifice, like the community and everyone else. Um, with that being said, I'll I'll pass over the test. She's uh, at the JPA. She might have a better answer for you for what the ultimate ultimate goal here is.
Thanks, Jack. So. What we're planning for is not one hundred year protection and for the residents that really enjoy the natural nature of the creek. It's, uh, we're dealing with a natural system. It's going to be difficult to sell a project that has all this amount of floodwalls. So we're thinking that based on direction from the board and input from the public. That we will reevaluate the alternatives that were looked at in the EIR. There's a suite of seventeen that were screened. And those would probably be looked at again if it comes to that. So what I might do now, well, we've got a few more questions, so um. That that's the quick answer on that one.
So you're not moving the goalposts? That's basically my question.
No, and this reach to project was not designed for one hundred year flood protection.
Okay, let me uh, stop asking then.
Trish Mulby.
Thanks, Nick Owen. Thanks, Jack, for an excellent presentation. My question is along the lines of what Tom has just brought up. In future presentations, it would help if we could have a comparison between. What I had understood as. The, what Tom's calling the goal of this aspect of the reach to project. Which is to pass the same amount of water we had with the nineteen ninety eight event. And with no freeboard. So being able to see what the differences are and where they are, I think would be very helpful. Um, is that clear enough for you to be able to respond to it at some point, but not right now?
Sure, Trish, yeah, it's about what we're saying. Yeah, the the difference is about a thousand CFS capacity, which is hard to translate into layman's terms, but that's about. Twenty percent, twenty, fifteen percent of what came through in New Year's Eve.
And I'm not sure I understood you, so. It's twenty percent let what we've currently designed. Has, is undersized by a thousand CFS. And. We're back to wanting to know about freeboard?
The the project as as currently designed. Um, will not handle as much flow as we previously thought, and this is about, it's it's more than a thousand CFS drop. So it's a, it's, we can say like a a twenty five, I don't have the numbers right in front of me in a in a various location, but. Uh, we can call it like, let's let's just call it a twenty five percent um, drop in what was expected in terms of. What we thought it could convey, let's say it could convey. Seventy five hundred, now we're thinking it's it's going to be close to six.
Okay, that's really helpful. And so in future presentations, if you can come, make that comparison clear. That if we just, in quotes, want to get back to seventy five hundred without freeboard. Make that one of the things that um, is able to be described the next time around.
Noted. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Chuck Bernstein.
Thank you very much. My name is Chuck Bernstein. I'm here actually in two capacities. Um, I am a director of the Menlo Park Fire Protection District. And have the assignment being the liaison to the the Creek JPA, so that's kind of an official thing. But I also live on Oak Court, just about two hundred feet from from where all this is, and I I have. Some personal interest in it, and I I have three questions. I I, and so should I ask all three and then wait for answers, or should I ask them one at a time? What's the best way to do that?
Depends uh, how complicated your questions are, Chuck.
Well, um, okay, I'll I'll just, I'll give you all three and. The 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 first one was, um. I I just informally, I noticed upstream from this near El Camino. Um, there seemed to be a lot of damage to the walls of the channel and so forth. And I just wondered if any of that was affecting um, your your considerations about what to do downstream. So that was one question. Um, this, the second one was, I I've sort of read two different things, and I'm a little confused about. About what it is that may be proposed. At one point, I seem to see four to five foot walls. And in 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 what you just presented, you talked about one foot walls. And I'm not sure what's really being discussed. So that's the second one. And the third one was that. De- despite this being apparently the second largest uh, or or most, I don't know. Rainfall or the biggest rush of rain in a shorter period of time, or however you want to term that. Um. It seemed to be relatively minimal flooding and minimal damage anywhere, and I wondered if you could comment on why that was compared to what happened in the past.
Just a clarification on your on your third question, minimal damage in with respect to this creek, or just in general, like California or San Francisco Bay?
I I mean, yes, you know, you talk about there was water, you know, uh, at university and woodland, for example. But it it wasn't terrible, you know, for a day you couldn't drive through it, but the next day you could. Uh, no houses were severely damaged. Uh, the wall, the 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 water didn't pool at the at the uh, freeway uh, walls. In South Palo Alto as it did before. It it just seemed like uh, people were not pushed out of their homes. Um, you know, and and suffered significant damage to their homes as they were in the past.
I'll I'll take your third question first, since it's it's fresh. Um, so the the damage, so one one thing that helped uh, Palo Alto is I know. Um, they recently upgraded their storm drain systems, but they have a new pretty big pump station. Um, by where humans auto body is by um, uh, one oh one, San Francisco Creek, yeah, it's a pump station. So what happened is the the water that came out of the creek actually got sucked into the storm drain and pumped out. Um, so that definitely helped the Palo Alto side um, this time around. Um, the I I did see isolated areas where there were low pot spots where the entire cul-de-sac was basically underwater. Um, I couldn't tell the damages, and but I I did see a lot of the damages occurred on the East Palo Alto side. Where the water escaped the bank on the north and then potted against um, basically one oh one and the front edge road. So the that's where I saw the the depths being the largest and kind of the most impact um, in terms of damages. Um, but I think Palo Alto, compared to nineteen ninety eight, of course, um, there is, it's much, it was much um, smaller. And and in addition, the the Reach One project helped a lot. So the the area downstream of one oh one, the East Palo Alto side, that would have. Been devastated basically this time around too, um, was spared. Um, because luckily we we finished the project a few years ago. Um, with respect to your question two, the, can I ask where you found the the five foot, seven foot wall? Was it? I don't think it was in my report. Maybe it was from um, something like a other brochure or some project.
Uh, what I saw was three to four foot walls, but maybe that was, I I I read something that was online or whatever. Um, and so I was just, I was just curious whether we were talking about one foot or three to four foot, or or all of those things are on the table.
Um, yeah, I can clarify. If if we want like a lower level of service, so let's say we want to, we want to build something. That will handle, let's, I'll just draw a number, six thousand CFS with some freeboard. Um, then the walls become, or like a foot, maybe two in someplace, depending on what you want. If you want extra protection, a little extra wiggle room, maybe you go higher. Um, if we're talking removal of Pope Chaucer Bridge, that's where it gets into four foot territory. And I, and the and the linear feet, the the two miles of linear feet on 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 those sides becomes uh, much. Uh, becomes the what you would need. Um, and anything higher, seven seems pretty high, um, that you might be reading something into like a retaining wall. Possibly uh, replacing the wooden wooden wall by University Avenue that that kind of collapsed. Um, so that that wall, if it would be, need to be rebuilt, because it's a retaining wall as well as a flood wall, it might be um. It might be around the five, seven, seven foot height, but not five, seven foot. Um, from the top of bank, it would be, you know, it would start below top of bank and go up. So if you were standing on the road, you would still only see like one or two feet, maybe.
I see. Could could you explain why the removal of the Pope Chaucer Bridge would require higher walls downstream?
Yeah, because currently a lot of water leaves at Pope Chaucer. If the bridge is removed, that water stays in the channel and it goes downstream to university, where people already flood. So if you, if Pope Chaucer is in place, the communities at university and downstream will never see a flow. Higher than a certain amount, right? But when you remove that bridge, suddenly all that water gushes down, and you will have to protect those people from. The the waters that would come down from removing Pope Chaucer. So typically, when we build flood control projects, we go downstream to upstream. Because your downstream needs to have capacity to handle everything you're delivering um, from the upstream location.
It it seems like then this would also require um, perhaps redesign of Newell Street to increase the the capacity.
Right, so luckily, we looked at that and did not, um, Newell Street, the current design is adequate um, for that additional flow. Um, and I wanted to answer your first question too about the the erosion upstream of El Camino. Um, so I think the project is outside the project limits, I believe, so we're not looking at it. You know, this time around. I I hesitated to say if there's a reach three project, you know, I don't know how long down the road, but. Um, it, because there's no flooding issue per se there, um, erosion there would be more of like a maintenance issue or something. Um, and typically, if it's by a bridge, let's say a Caltrans Bridge, El Camino, or or a Caltrain Bridge, like the UP, the UPR Railroad. Um, that would likely be um, repairs that would be uh, led by the the transportation agency that has the bridge over the creek.
Thank you very much.
We have no more requests to speak at this time.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Harris. So bringing it back to the dais, um, are there any questions? From Mr. Chu or Director Stone?
Thank you. Um, well. And thanks for the the report. This is. I think frustrating to to say the least. Uh, so much work has been been done on the reach two, and I know the community has been. Really eager to to move along based on the modeling that we thought existed, and so having this this new information. It is concerning, but I'm also. I'm not an engineer and trying to understand, I mean, just how big of a deal is this now to? Our our current reach to um, design, so I mean, can you, can you give us a sense of? Kind of what now, what's the next step? How does this? How 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 does this change the timeline, the costs, everything else? Because that's why, that's why I'm kind of struggling to understand. I can see there's alternatives being proposed, but I I think. What I would imagine, this is kind of, since this isn't, this is not an action item, this is very much kind of a a first step. I don't think the public is really knowledgeable, or I mean, I think many in Palo Alto just found out about this from Daily Post today. Um, and probably several of us did as as well. So can you give us a better sense on that?
Yeah, so the, what it means in the in the short term is whatever project is being planned. Uh, will not achieve the same desired effect. It will still achieve some effect, don't get it wrong. Building it will still have benefit because it increased the capacity of the channel. It just doesn't increase it to the level we thought it would. Um, and the main part, the biggest part is the Pope Chaucer cannot. Cannot leave. So um, the, it seems like, just you know, just playing around with what we know. Um, that you could provide some level of flood protection for communities um, that are impacted downstream of Pope. Um, so there, you know, the the breakouts that occur by university, Euclid, all those areas, woodland. Um, but upstream of Pope Chaucer, if you wanted to wrap that um, spill, basically fix that area in. Um, the footprint will increase dramatically and um, probably, you know, cost too. So um, it it really comes down to figuring out what, if if the desire is to phase it. You know, in such a way that say, you know, we we do this first in preparation for a future where we do even more. Maybe you wait for Stanford to fix the reservoir, you know, like that that, do those all become more? Um, play a bigger role now, because um, you just. It'd be very difficult to get a project where you can remove Pope Chaucer. It would be a lot of floodwalls. And the history of the project basically shows that there's no appetite for that. Um, so either we build a smaller, a a project, not a smaller project, but a project with a smaller level of service. Um, or um, go all in and and try to do something bigger.
So looking at Pope Chaucer, because so many residents who have been impacted by flooding there, I think saw finally. Light at the end of the tunnel for for that portion of of the creek. If Pope Chaucer were to stay, what can be done then to mitigate those those flooding risks as as much as possible? I mean, is it just a matter of of increasing the height of of floodwalls? Can you talk a little more about detail? I I'd imagine there's a lot of residents who are probably concerned about what you just said.
Yeah, so the main issue with Pope Chaucer is it's just an undersized bridge and probably done on purpose in the past, who knows, but. But, um, so a lot of the water leaves the system there. So you could, let's say shore up the, like you said, shore up the, the banks and add taller flood walls. Um, so the water stays in the channel. The problem with that is that additional water goes, still goes downstream. So anything you do at Pope Chaucer will have an impact downstream because you have to increase your project again downstream to, to accommodate the extra water, like I was explaining earlier. Um, the, the, I don't wanna say it's not the best way, but it, the way that allows you to get away with, um, reducing flood risk and not adding flood walls would be detention or holding the water upstream at Stanford or somewhere else. Um, so to stop the water from ever getting there. Therefore you can pass a little more on their Pope and not affect the people downstream.
Okay. So a lot of the, I don't know, maybe not a solution, but strategies and mitigation seem to, in, in some ways, in, well, many ways maybe involves Stanford as far as more, more upstream. Are they, how, how are we, I guess the staff have a plan to incorporate them more in the decision-making as we move forward to really be able to have this be a more holistic approach?
Yeah, um, we, we talked with Stanford a, a decent amount, cause they, to do their projects, they need buy-in from us because what essentially the dam has lots of sediment built up on, behind it. And it's gonna be expensive for them to basically dredge it and haul it out via truck. So they're hoping to let the creek just flush it out. Problem is you send millions of cubic yards of sediment down the creek, it's gonna clog things up. So they're hoping that their reduction in, in flow from the reservoir will offset the additional sediment coming down. Uh, because from their perspective, they just have to prove that there's no impact to the existing system and they're not making things worse. If we wanna make things better, then there's a discussion with Stanford on, will they operate the reservoir as a flood control, you know, reservoir? I, I don't think they have an appetite for that. Um, will we contribute money somehow to help them with the reservoir? You know, the, then those questions become kind of skewed that way. That makes sense.
And I think it's, it's critical that we engage Stanford early and often in this discussion. I understand it might be more expensive for them, but Lord knows Stanford has a lot more money than all the constituents in our, in our cities do, who are having to mitigate their own flood risks by, um, by, by taking all their, their own precautions. Um, so hoping that we can engage them. So is there more?
And yeah, I was just gonna add that we are engaging them. We just met with them on Tuesday, talked a little bit about upstream tension, detention and the importance of it even more so. And in our comments on their NOP, we, uh, described our desire for upstream detention. Um, but I do feel like we have a very open relationship with Stanford and I think they understand the issue of sediment and the cap, creek capacity much better now than they did before they issued that NOP. So are there other questions from the dais?
And when we say, um, upstream detention, we're, we're seeing like separate from Seersville because Stanford has been very clear in my time on the board that, that they were not a fan of upstream detention on, on their property.
Yeah, they, they have changed somewhat in that. They do have upstream detention as one of their alternatives in their NOP, separate from, uh, the Seersville. And we also commented on that, uh, we believe upstream detention should be a part of all of their alternatives.
Any additional, I, I see, I'll reopen public comment, um, at, at the end, but I don't, I don't wanna back and forth just for, but I will, I will let you ask, ask your question. I promise.
Yeah, Margaret did prepare a presentation that I will provide and, and give it just, um, it is her review of Valley Waters with our, with our own input. So I think the key point on this first slide here is she wanted everybody to know that that atmospheric river storm, um, which you, it just produced three times more precipitation than ever had been. And this is just a sign of changing climate. And, and the whole issue, it's not unique to San Francisco Creek. Uh, Valley Water is seeing this natural systems issue in other watersheds that they're working in. And of course, uh, we know Soquel Creek Water District, um, and Paharo Valley, both of those have huge issues. Even SFPUC, and there was an Aqua Conference in May where the title was, um, weather whiplash flood solutions during climate extremes. So this is part of a new reality that we are all faced with. And ours is one maybe not even as big as Santa Cruz or Capitola. So, um, oops. So in this presentation, um, you've seen this picture from Jim Wiley showing the, the same breakout. I don't wanna talk about that more, but I think what Margaret, everybody wanted to make sure everybody's aware of is that we're in the urban reach, we've built up to the flood plain. We don't have that flood plain anymore and, and that is the main issue. So, uh, and so this is just really, we underestimate or the model underestimated the roughness of the creek. And it's just that combination and cumulative effect of anything that caused an impediment to flow. And what Jack said, it may not be vegetation, but it could have been debris. And because it was that first flush storm. So in this one, it's another way for you to think about it. We overestimated the capacity of the creek by as much as two feet in some areas. And we didn't, you know, it broke out where we didn't always think it was going to break out. And then the third one, we've talked about already, we underestimated the vulnerability. And you heard about this last month with the presentation from Stanford. So, um, and so then this is, the implications are the same. With the top of bank project will need to be re-scoped and expanded in length and in some places and in height. We don't know heights of these and then this, this will add cost. And then the top of bank structures must be able to protect with greater flows without Pope Chaucer Bridge as, as it is. And we've not, we've not done all this modeling. So what the JPA is, is planning to do is further validate the model. Just do an independent peer review to make sure that what Valley Water is saying about the model is correct. We are proceeding with Newell Bridge as is, and with a little bit of verification, we believe we can move forward with the widening. And then, uh, using this new peer reviewed model, uh, figure out what design changes we need to make. And then as Jack said, we're gonna complete these planned surveys. And then really, uh, vegetation management, we've been talking about this for a couple of months now, working with our city and watershed partners, uh, to, it's a larger star, watershed stewardship effort. And I just want everybody to be clear that vegetation was not the problem. It may have been debris, but we don't know. And then we really are going to go back and look at additional project elements or temporary flood mitigation actions. Um, for example, you know, the garage in East Palo Alto that flooded with four feet of water, they can easily install a, a flood break or some other kind of a foldable, um, flood, floodgate so that when a storm comes, they can close it off and it would not fill with water. Those are easy fixes. We're looking at ideas on, uh, all along Pope Chaucer Bridge. If there's a pop-up flood wall, just something that's, you know, we're really trying to think out of the box here and we will. And, uh, with that, uh, that was all I wanted to say, to make sure that Margaret's, uh, staff report got presented to you.
Yeah. Um, thank you very much, Ms. Ms. Byler. And I, and I do think it's, it's worth, uh, noting that obviously it's a very significant, uh, presentation as, uh, today, especially given, uh, the JP's remit. Um, and it's only a pressing, a family issue that keeps Ms. Bruce away, uh, today. So I think that that's certainly worth noting. Um, y- y- you know, I do think it's important to, to say, w- w- with all that, it seems as though none of that really provides relief for those homes and residents that are most at risk in connection with the current status of Pope Chaucer. Um, and, and let's be clear that Pope Chaucer Bridge in many ways represents, um, an artificial detention of the water there. And a detention of the water at that spot and the homes that are there. And, um, and that's unfortunate, but it seems as though what, what the presentation today says is that that risk that was created many decades ago, that it's, it's really not possible for us to undo it or mitigate it. Uh, based on the projects that we understand them now, it is just transferring that risk um, uh, to, to, to other residents, uh, along, along the creek. That, that's my understanding of where, where we're at.
I would say that the design parameter would, we would have to have a, a study session to figure out what we wanna do. But there are out of the box ideas that you can consider. I know that, um, in Contra Costa County, they do deepen the creek to maintain FEMA freeboard. This was an alternative that we had, but discarded because it could come back immediately. And it may be that this is still not a viable alternative. But going back to look at our seventeen alternatives in the EIR and to see if there's any fundamental way that we can do this. It is always assumed that we have some kind of an upstream detention as extra protection.
Director Pine, do you?
You mentioned, you mentioned the EIR and the seventeen alternatives. I mean, is there any possibility we would have to reopen the EIR to address this new challenge?
I'm not sure about that yet. I know we have a supplemental EIR that would, that we're planning on going. And then I think if anything needs to change regarding the Reach Two project as envisioned, then we might need to do a supplemental EIR.
But I, I just to, to be clear, it seems as though like, I mean, y- yes, uh, additional EIR is, 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 is kind of at minimum. What, what's being suggested here is entirely different project. Like completely different, um, uh, to achieve what we thought we were gonna achieve with this project. If, if this analysis is accurate. And so, um, I, I think, I, I think the, you know, okay, I'm sorry, where are you gonna say something?
No, it, it may be like, we don't know yet about the EIR. We do know that the scope and the supplemental would have to be revised for the top of bank portions of it. Um, what it would be is the board providing direction. Do we want to move forward with a different, uh, target? Not as large a target as what we had discussed in the EIR. And, and whether that requires an EIR, uh, another EIR supplemental, that I cannot answer today.
But it's not just a, a target, it is, cause the key here is, is, is Pope Chaucer. Like it seems like that, based on this analysis, nothing can include the replacement of Pope Chaucer. Right? I, I don't think channel widening, um, some top of bank work in spots. Um, I think has never been like, I mean, yeah, that, that, that's fine, that, that's not the issue here. The, the key thing is, is that this presentation says that Pope Chaucer can't be removed.
So we would be able to move forward with the EIR portions that were in the EIR, but anything that changes regarding Pope Chaucer, yes.
Yeah.
Hi, this is Kevin Murray with, uh, JP Staff. I wanted to add that in addition to looking at alternatives that keep water in the creek or hold it upstream, there's also some, kind of, um, emerging, uh, opportunities to manage water once it leaves the system. There are systems in place elsewhere that move water through streetways and storm drain, um, upgrades so that even if water leaves the channel, it doesn't end up, uh, causing damage.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, um, for that. I, uh, so what, what does this do as relates to the project that we are currently pursuing in connection with funding, like all of, does, does that all get paused? Um, to then sort of like really engage in the analysis of whether what we were attempting to achieve there is even possible? And, and does that put some of our funding at risk?
It could put the Army Corps CAP 205 program at risk because, um, the, of the way that the, uh, cost benefit, the BCR ratio was. Um, we do have a grant specifically for widening sites from Irwin. That does not include anything about Pope Chaucer, so it would not put that funding. And then Valley Water still has the clean, safe creek water funding that would still be available to do what our board wants us to do and as well as the community to, uh, decrease flood risk in, uh, in Reach Two.
And then I think my, my, uh, then, then final question, it's just sort of looking at, at Pope Chaucer since it seems as though what we're hearing now is that it can be replaced. What about just an overall structural analysis of, of the Pope, of Pope Chaucer Bridge? Cause now it seems like, oh, it, it needs to be there, um, or unless we transfer that risk down that like, uh, downstream. Like do we have some sense or understanding of how long does that last as a bridge?
Um, I don't know the answer to that offhand, so I'd be afraid to give you an answer. But my memory was that the Pope Chaucer Bridge is considered structurally sound right now.
Um, okay, if there are no more, uh, please, Director Eisenberg.
Thank you. I, I hadn't talked till now, cause I'm just kind of sitting here. I guess I feel, okay, so my background, like I know some of us, um, have this background in tech, you know, and in innovation. And it's just, you know, I, I once worked at a company, the flip video company, where the CEO would say, make it smaller, make it smaller. And the engineer would say, that's impossible. And then at the next meeting, it would be smaller. So I guess I feel like this can't possibly be the answer. You know, this is the initial reaction, not even analysis, I feel like. I feel like this is the initial reaction or response. And I'm hoping that when, you know, you all staff have a chance to really look at this and go through the, quite frankly, unlimited, you know, you know, alternatives. When you think broadly about it, that there will be a solution. Because this current situation is not tenable, right? It's just not. So the answer can't be, oh, well, so sad, too bad, live with it. That's not gonna be okay, you know, but is it gonna cost more? Well, then maybe that's money well spent, you know? Is it gonna take longer? Well, maybe that's the breaks, you know? Do we need to start work on this earlier rather than sooner? Yes, absolutely. Maybe that takes more staff. But you know, it's, I feel like there's so much going on right now in this field. And there's been so many really important, in my opinion, you know, and instructive, enlightening reports about the use of nature, for example, for flood mitigation. And maybe everybody needs to compromise more, the property owners specifically, like Stanford, maybe the folks living near the creeks or maybe certain, you know, maybe certain uses right near the creeks need to be altered. You know, but I guess this, I don't feel like this analysis is a thorough one yet. I mean, am I wrong with that? I want, I, you know, on the world's biggest optimist granted, but I just feel like there's a world of options here.
We, we do have options and, you know, just to, to think, we did, we evaluated the universe of options in, in our EIR. And we selected a couple that we thought were the best for detailed evaluation. We'll go back and look at some of those. For example, um, using the roads as, as floodways. We know that the roads were already used as floodways, but if we had a, a expandable flood wall that could pop up during times of storm, just in one lane or around the edges, uh, it might be that, uh, residents could still get in and out of their areas. And we know that, you know, how long would you need these floodwalls? Maybe one to two days and they would go back down again and not be a real visible feature. I think those types of things, uh, might be revisited, but I don't know the answer to it. And I think what is pretty clear is that the hydraulics have changed and that's a shock to everybody. And that's what we're here to talk about.
Right. I guess I also wanna say that, um, you know, again, this is my personal bias, but I think also of my constituents. You know, investments in the ecologically based solutions just universally are more sustainable. And that means sustainable financially, they last longer, they, you know, they assist with other goals, you know? And often they're viewed as more expensive because, um, you know, environmental harm is not, is technically, you know, typically has not been factored as a harm or a cost. But it needs to be now, it really needs to be now. So if you include So if you include the actual cost of environmental harm, then the financials change dramatically. And we know that environmental harm tends to harm, you know, communities that are more vulnerable, lower income, often communities of color. And we do need to be equitable in all of our analyses. And we saw in our last board meeting how it is the communities of color and the lower income communities that are harmed most by failure to act, you know. And so we need to act. We must act. It's our duty. But we also need to act with sustainable solutions with an eye on equity. I mean, I think a lot has changed since the initial analysis, you know, occurred, you know, climate wise, environmentally, and this growing income disparity. Our income gap here in this area is the largest income gap in the world. And that is relevant to our analysis too. So I'm, you know, I welcome an analysis, especially it's not our first step in this, it's our second step. If we can stay on course for the first step, you know, while giving a more thorough analysis with our second step, I'm hoping that what we'll end up with is something that is more equitable and longer lasting. Is that possible?
I think so. I feel confident and things have changed a bit. So thank you for that comment.
I mean, I would just say that, like, you know, things have changed a bit because we've been at this since 1998. I mean, and if we ask ourselves why it has taken that long and still have not fully mitigated the flood risk, specifically between Pope Chaucer renewal and that Reach Two area, it is like all of these things that have sort of cropped up and thrown this, this project off course. And so I don't know quite what I tell those residents who are most at risk. Because, you know, a few months ago, I was telling them that it's been a long time coming, but it is exactly, it is coming. As I say here now, I can't tell them that anymore. And I had thought at one point that we would have these projects at least started in my tenure on the board. Now there is for me a real belief that I will pass off this board and we will not have any significant, like, in the ground sort of changes as it relates to bringing these, these projects to pass. And so that's a general, this is not directed at anyone. This is a general frustration with the situation, the facts are the facts, and the science is the science. And certainly we will doubly confirm the science in the situation. But, but that's just the general frustration where I am. I did say that I would reopen a public comment. So if it's okay with you, Ms. Harris now, I will officially reopen public comment for anyone either joining virtually or anyone in the chamber who would like to provide public comment.
Yes, we have a couple of speakers here in the chamber and a couple of speakers online. So let's start with who's here present in the chamber, please. I'm sorry, Jim, can, this gentleman actually had his hand up first, so can he go ahead and go? Thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Could you please state your name for us?
Yeah, my name is Jonathan Cedar. I live on Fulton Street in Palo Alto. Will the data and the algorithms or whatever software you wrote for the model be made available to the public? So we can, so it can be reviewed and so we can examine sensitivities and so forth? Question one. Will it be available?
I second that request. I think the request is, I don't know if his mic is really working, to make this data. And I think even the original data that available to the public, I think that's a great idea because we have so many engineers and, you know, highly skilled, highly educated folks in our community. It never hurts to have more people look at it, I think.
Yeah, I personally don't have a problem with it. The software that runs it is freeware. It's the Army Corps made the software. So you can download it. If you have the model, you can just open it.
Okay, great. Thank you. My second question is, is it possible, did you consider some enlargement of the Chaucer culvert to at least mitigate risk with, you know, while protecting downstream? That is to take advantage of the increased capacity downstream?
Yeah, so that, that is, should be part of the slew of alternatives that should be considered. Like, opening it slightly, reducing risk a little bit for the communities upstream Pope Chaucer and figuring out how to protect the people downstream.
Great. And then my third question is, is any of this data, is there any mechanism to share it with FEMA? Because I see many, many properties in your maps that are in the FEMA flood zone, but you predict no flood, no flood risk in your model.
So FEMA regulatory flood maps are notorious. I don't want to throw any federal partners under the, under the bus. But did most of the maps were done 1970s by one consultant? The, in the topography has changed, flooding, hydrology has changed. But the impetus for updating maps lies with local communities, I'll put it there. So if, if the cities want to update it, submit a letter of map provision to FEMA and update it. I mean, we have the data. We could, we would support anything the community wants to do. I would also point out that if you do that, people's insurances will change. Some people's rates might go up. So there is a lot of, you know, this discussion to be had, let's just say, on whether the maps get updated.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Wiley from Menlo Park. I live on the edge of the creek. And I was witness to the 98 floods and all the other floods because I just look out the window and then go for a walk. I wanted to point out with respect to debris mitigation that the strategy has changed between 98, 2005, and up to 2012. Someone from the police department or city works or fire department or somebody would stand there with a pike. And every time a log came down, they would push it and we'd get sucked under the bridge. And that solved the problem. There was no pile of debris because each piece as it came down got pushed under and just went down the bridge. And I assume there was somebody at the next bridge doing the same thing. And they no longer do that. Now they let it pile up, then get the forklift out or get a big thing out and they dread, they pull it all out. But pushing it down seemed to work pretty good. Again, it's a little unclear about the size of the flood walls that are being discussed here. And that's probably because they haven't finished all the surveying. But there's one thing I'd like to leave you with. It appears that for every 400 cubic feet per second of additional flood protection you want, you'll need about one foot of additional flood wall. So for example, the difference between what will go through Middlefield Bridge and what will go through Pope Chaucer is about 1,350 cubic feet per second. So if you take that 1,350 divided by 400, you would need about an additional three and a half feet of flood wall to protect that. So it's, you know, one foot for every 400 cubic feet is a good number to have in the back of your mind based on the report because that's the difference between, you know, alternative one and alternative two. That's all I had is comments.
Trish Mulvey.
Thanks, Miko. My, I guess this is a comment rather than a question. When, back in the day, the design was based on passing the 1998 flood without freeboard, there was an equal analysis done that said, and furthermore, that's all we can pay for. Costs have changed as well as all the other things we've talked about this afternoon. And I, my imagination is suggesting they've changed large numbers for the kinds of things we're talking about today. So I would just ask that we also include a future discussion about how much we can afford to do locally with existing agency capacity from a cost standpoint? Or what kind of a timeline do we need to include in our planning for going to a vote of the community? And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Tom Ryan Flash.
Thank you. I, I have to say that I find this discussion very troubling. In representing the Crescent Park Neighborhood Association, we have about 1,000 people on our email list. And every winter, I hear messages from people who can't sleep at night because they don't know what's going to happen in this creek. It is 25 years now out from the 1998 flood. We've had two major events, one in '22, one in 1998, and five in between that almost overflowed the Pope Chaucer Bridge. Pope Chaucer is the problem. It was copied in 1946 by the city of Palo Alto to be exactly the design of the Middlefield Bridge moved down the creek to Pope Chaucer. And the design of the Y fork there was done in conjunction with Menlo Park. And it is clearly Palo Alto who put in this dam in the creek. Before that, we had a clear flow. So there is a liability issue here. I'm not a lawyer, but I can tell you there are people in the community who are concerned about that. While Crescent Park has been patient while we wait for reach from Highway 101 to the bay to get completed for the Caltrans to replace the 101 conduits, culverts. And it is time that we get this project fixed, Reach Two. And from my point of view, it has got to include Pope Chaucer getting increased capacity, ideally with removal of the bridge and replacement with a free flow of bridge for which we can increase the capacity, the conveyance downstream from Pope Chaucer to include the capacity of what can come through Middlefield. We have tried to make this creek as natural as possible, but nobody has mentioned changing the Manning coefficients downstream to let the water flow more equally or more rapidly down the creek. That I, I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to say to the community tomorrow when I report on what went on at this meeting. And I have to tell you that there are going to be people that are really put out by this because of the continuing fear over the winter rainy season of how they can protect their homes and their lives and their properties. So I believe that the solution here has to be get rid of the Pope Chaucer Bridge and fix the downstream creek in order to handle the capacity that it will undoubtedly flow downstream. So I, I'm representing a large group of people that really need this problem to be fixed. So thank you.
Thank you. Zinnia Hammer.
Okay. Hello. So thank you for that presentation and the discussion. First of all, I was pleased and encouraged to hear that the Newell Road Bridge design is, works great and can proceed, and it needs to proceed as fast as possible because that is part of the solution. So that was encouraging, and please move forward with that as quickly as possible. Second, moving on to upstream of that towards Pope Chaucer. I thought Tom Ryan Flash's comments were right on. I strongly agree with Tom and support everything he said. We know that Pope Chaucer Bridge is the problem that blocks the creek flow. It needs to be fixed as soon as possible, hopefully replaced. The way I understood the presentation is that if we remove Pope Chaucer Bridge, we need to redesign and reevaluate, reevaluate the top of bank features downstream of Pope Chaucer. And by all means, let's go ahead and do that and do what needs to be done to replace Pope Chaucer, even if it means more, more solid or slightly higher top of bank features downstream of Chaucer. This needs to be done. It needs to be fixed. And Director Eisenberg spoke about the need for a sustainable and environmental solution. And that includes removing Pope Chaucer because it blocks the creek. It's a cement dam in the stream. And removing it will lead to a more sustainable, less costly to maintain, more reliable system that will be able to handle rain and higher flows for any length of time. So I encourage everyone to review this analysis to see what kind of top of bank features downstream of Pope Chaucer are needed. Proceed with the removal of Pope Chaucer and replacement and move ahead with this.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. I'm sorry, Jeff Shore.
My name is Jeff Shore. I'm a Palo Alto resident. I think it would be, or could be worthwhile for the board to ask staff to figure out what happened here. I mean, not necessarily who's at fault, but what's the process that resulted in getting us to a model that was so flawed that we would bet so much resources on? And that, not because it's, it's worth creating accountability for what happened, but so that we don't do it again. And whatever steps besides peer review, I think it'd be worthwhile considering that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a follow up question. Well, first of all, I want to thank the speakers, the community members for talking. It is so important that the community participates. And I am very grateful for your points of view. I often say, and I think you can't say too often, that we have an extraordinary community here. So many highly skilled and educated and experienced folks. And everything you all said has been very enlightening to me, and I appreciate it. So I have a question, I think, in response to one of the previous speakers who mentioned that there's a ratio between how high a wall has to be and how much capacity, you know, the waterway has. One thing, I mean, I haven't read the underlying study, nor am I an engineer that I claim I'd be an expert when I read it. But to me, it just seemed like a very, it's just never the case in science with my limited, well, I have a fairly decent science education. But anyway, it's never really the case that a problem mandates one solution, right? It's like, oh, this, there's not enough capacity, therefore we must make the height of this wall bigger. I mean, it seems to me that there's also the option of increasing the capacity of the, of the stream, of the creek is also would negate the need for the wall. I mean, that, I guess what, you know, and not to blame the Post, Daily Post for, you know, for its headline, but I think, I don't know, I guess my question is, you know, do you intend to look at all options? You know, do you intend to look at widening this creek, you know, not taking away the Pope Chaucer Bridge and not rebuilding it? Which actually is, you know, an idea that might, might be appealing, I don't know, you know. But it's, it's, you know, I guess I just want reassurance. We're not assuming that this raising the height, however many additional feet of some, the wall is our only answer here, right? Is that right?
Yes, Director Eisenberg, I can tell you that we will not use a back of the envelope calculation, which is what I think Mr. Wiley intended. We will do all of the analysis and really evaluate what needs to be done. And what I know about this community is that we won't have a pile of flood walls or if the, you know, it's, this is what we know about it. We will focus on as natural a creek as can be and have some level of risk reduction for the residents. And I also heard the Crescent Park Neighborhood Association has been very strong and very vocal. And we, we need to make sure that our solution is accepted by the community.
Oh, I know that. I appreciate that. But I want to be very clear. I'm not questioning the analysis, nor do I find it a back of the envelope. I actually think that analysis made sense to me. You know, the, the less capacity that, that the creek has, it just seems rational that of course, if you're going to use a wall as your solution, then yeah, well, it'd have to be a certain height. But another solution is increasing the capacity of the creek. of the creek. It's not just raising the the wall, I guess is what I'm saying. I I think that the community member made everything he said made tons of sense to me. And I don't question it. I don't. So I I just want to clarify that. I mean, it's, it, you know, I I'm grateful for these analyses. And I so that's really what I was asking. Are we looking into expanding the capacity of the creek? Well, another quick thing, too, I guess, is I think I loved the question also about are we going to do some sort of, what's it called, damage control, you know, look, not damage control, kind of, what is the word? When you look back and you try to figure out what happened? I mean, in my mind, to me, so many things jump out at me as as what happened. I mean, the the push for the removal of so many trees, I think, is done without analysis. You heard me say this before, like when you remove a tree, there is like a, there is a impacts that may not be factored in. You remove a tree, then then more, you know, you you have more erosion, right? And more stuff ends out in the creek. Like removing a tree has consequences that maybe weren't factored in. Like, that is why there's a lot of pushing forward towards keeping trees, you know, and they hold up our earth, you know. So I do think some certain short term solutions were embraced without thorough analysis of the consequence, in part because that consequence couldn't really be known at the time. You don't really know what's going to happen. But you do know in general that removing trees has a lot of consequences. And and I don't think that kind of stuff really was factored in or continues to be factored in. That's why I said earlier that we need to include environmental damage into our analyses in a much more thorough way than they've been done in the past. So but my main question was, you know, I assume that raising the wall isn't the only solution, that expanding capacity might be another one.
And I'll definitely agree with that one. And for my perspective, the main issue with the tree removal was the trees that were growing on the concrete culvert of the Pope Chaucer Bridge. And and if you remove the bridge, those trees cannot stay. We can save some and plant some, but they're on a culvert.
Right. I mean, they're on concrete because the concrete was put there. So it's not the trees' fault. It's the concrete's fault. So I mean, it's, it's, you know, you do what you can do. But I think a lot of trees were moved for convenience or because of fear that wasn't necessarily fear based on a thorough understanding of, yeah, okay, you're afraid of one thing, but maybe this other thing is more to fear. Regardless, I do want to just conclude by saying, I'm so, you know, I could sometimes there's confusion about this. I am, I am very much in favor with proceeding on behalf of the community and not slowing things down. I'm glad we can continue with the new old bridge. And I think there is enough time to figure this out. You know, there is money, more money available now for sustainable solutions, you know, from state and federal and government and maybe hiring a grant writer might be something. A grant application writer might be something the board want should consider. I have no idea. But I hope that I I'm confident that staff will take a creative approach to solving these. Thank you.
Thanks. I just have one more question. Does staff anticipate a timeline now moving forward when we're going to be able to, when this issue will come back to us with with these alternatives more vetted, as well as do we have a plan for community engagement meetings during that during that time as well?
I don't know about the timeline. I'd like to wait for Margaret to get back. We are going to meet next week. She'll be back next week. And I can tell you for sure, we will have additional community meetings. We knew this would be a shock. So as soon as we heard that the memo was coming out, that's the purpose of this special meeting. And it's really just to receive the information and and kind of try to absorb it and get started with a independent review to make sure that that analysis is correct.
And I appreciate the special meeting being called. This has been a very helpful conversation, a very disappointing one. But as the chair said, it is what it is. And we have to deal with the facts and the reality now. I thought the public's comments were all really helpful as well as I try to orient myself with this with this problem. And do hope moving forward, we're not, we're not set on on one path. We're not removing any options. I understand. I think the desire to say, okay, Pope Chaucer needs to be there. I think Director Eisenberg made good points as far as I think there are a lot of alternatives out there. At the end of the day, of course, none of us want to transfer these flood risks anywhere else, especially downstream. But I think we're far too early right now to remove anything from from this. So looking forward to this conversation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And I would just add, I think Director Stone said that it was shocking reading the report and to be clearing complete sort of transparency. We essentially have, as members of this board had access to the report as the public had access to the report. And so and and then there was, as soon as we knew this information, the process was to make it or knew this information was coming, certainly to make it available for for everyone on equal footing. And that, yes, we have this now. We can, we've had this meeting for an initial sort of, you know, walkthrough of it. And then now we have have some time to to more fully, fully digest it and understand it. I do want to, like, when I know Ms. Bruce and you, Ms. Byler have talked about, like, is our plan to have this report peer reviewed? Or is it our plan to do our own separate analysis?
Yeah, separate peer review of the of the model and the report.
Okay, so we're going to review this, though not have someone do, you know, from 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 square one, an analysis? Is is there a reason why we would sort of have this reviewed versus just hiring someone independent and saying, like, do this analysis?
I think we're talking about the same thing.
Okay.
It would be an independent review of the model and the results and making sure that what this model says is correct and that we can then move forward with figuring out if so, what can we do?
My, and again, this is not my area of expertise, but like, what if I want someone to use another model, right? And not necessarily just tell me whether this model is right or not, or what the the accuracy of this model? What if I want someone to really start over? Like, again, it's sort of like using a legal system. I'm not looking for an appeal, right? Where I start with a court record already in place from the trial court. I'm going to go to another jurisdiction. And I'm going to try this all over again and see, not that I'm trying to form shop at all, but or or change the science. But again, let's just think about that. Obviously, I'm not putting you on the spot. We, there is much, much road to to go down. But I do think whatever route we're going down, let's make sure we are very specifically clear about why we're going down that that route and and that there is a clear sort of, like, there is, that we're following in line with what you might expect in this this situation.
Yes. And any independent review would have recommendations either to improve the clarity or improve the model. It could, I don't think that they would use a different model because everybody uses this model, but it could be expanded to be a 2D or or another version of it that, you know, would be more labor intensive. And I may see if Jack has any comments on that because he is the expert modeler. I'm putting him on the spot.
Yeah, good discussion. I really glad that we're all thinking about this holistically. The the hard part, I'm just, I want to keep expectations realistic. The model is only as good as the validation data we have. Think like AI, whatever you have. We have the data we have observed from New Year's Eve. It's very conclusive. So any any peer review would basically use that same validation data because that's all we have. So there likely won't be a significant change, right? Whoever's doing the peer review would be using the same data, basically, survey data. We're all using the same thing unless you want to spend, you know, 200 grand for some of the survey on the entire creek again. And model wise, this is, there's not going to be a lot of variation, even if you go to a final resolution. That's just my two cents. But definitely welcome to look at my work and our work. So.
This is Kevin Murray. I want to add just maybe a different way to think about it is that we're going to hire somebody to look at the data that has that was presented during the New Year's Eve storm and see if they reached the same conclusions that Jack presented today.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, staff. Thank you. I don't see any more comments from from the DIAS. So this is an informational item. There is no action on the part of the board other than to to hear the presentation. So thank you. So we'll close out and then go to Board Member Announcements, Information Items and Requests, Agenda Item Six. I'll initially call and see if there is any public comment on Agenda Item Six, which is Board Announcements, Informational Items. Okay, seen none. I'll bring it back to the DIAS and then turn to my colleagues and see if there is any request, announcements, or information they'd like to share.
I just want to reiterate my request that as much data can be provided to the public as possible so that, you know, our community can take a look at it. I mean, you already agreed to it, but I again want to want to say that. And I know you'll do that. So thank you for this and for this meeting. I just, I want to echo the chair's gratitude for having this meeting so that we all don't have to freak out about it in private. We have a place to discuss. Thank you.
All right. Well, seeing no other board comments, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. At 5:18.